Now, I know the last time this came up, Mr. Rich decided to wait until it was a full board, but as you can see, there's not a full board tonight.
Okay.
So, what's your pleasure? Do you want to continue, or?
We'd like to come to some kind of a resolution so that we can continue to schedule out the rest of our summer.
Okay, so would you just, for the audience at home, please explain what it is you want to do?
We're looking to serve beer to be consumed on-premise during the concert series for the remainder of the summer.
Okay, any comments or questions from the board?
I just have a question. So if you're serving beer, and obviously, I'm assuming, you're going to check ages-
Yes, ma'am.
-if it's questionable?
Yes.
Now, what if you have someone that you think has had maybe too much because they've got their own store amount with them? Will you be able to, and will you do anything about it?
It'd be the same as a bar or restaurant. You know, we can cut them off. I can choose to not serve anybody that I feel is incapacitated, over-served, under the influence of anything.
Okay.
We would cut them off, yeah.
Good. I just wanted you to say it publicly.
Yeah.
I assumed, if you're going to do this, that that's your thinking, but I wanted you at least to acknowledge that publicly.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board? We do now have a full board.
Mary? I'll just, I know that you've already been, well, was it you that was before?
No.
Yeah, I was.
It was you. Yeah. You know, I'm not in favor of alcohol being sold on the Town Common. It's not personal to your-
Nope.
...establishment, but this is how I voted in the past. I think it opens up the door for liability for the town. You know, it's a town-sponsored event. If, and I respect that you won't, you know, obviously, serve to underage people, or there is a duty on behalf of any bartender in any restaurant to not continue to serve to somebody that they believe is intoxicated, because the liability can come back to the restaurant as well as the bartender. And now, the liability can come back to the town as well, and I believe, because it's a town-sponsored event. So, I haven't had any, you know, residents ever express anything concerned to me that they wish that they could buy alcohol on the common during these series. It's been very successful for many years without alcohol, and I guess I do worry, I mean, someone gets in their car right after the concert, and heaven forbid, there is a problem, and the officer says, "Well, where are you coming from?" Or they hit another car. I hate to be thinking of these scenarios. Well, we came from the Sturbridge Concert Series, and it's a town-sponsored event on town property. So, I'm not going to vote in favor of it. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I really think that opens up the door to liability to the town, and I think that there's also going to possibly be concerns from the residents that live around the common. I don't, I just don't know what kind of effect it would have. So, my suggestion, because I think perhaps, I know it was a two-two vote before, and I think Selectman Jimis was the one that wasn't in attendance. I don't know how she's going to vote, but I guess I'm asking the board, if you're inclined to vote for it, why don't we give him a one-day, why don't we give the establishment a one-day license to try it at one concert, rather than just opening it up for the rest of the summer and see how it goes on a case-by-case basis? But I did inquire of our town administrator some questions, and I don't know if you had a chance to look into it.
Just the insurance requirement?
Insurance requirement, okay. So, anyway, that's my piece.
Just to a couple of your points, we did do the town bonfire. I thought it went really well. I don't think there was any problems that came from that, from neighbors or anything, so that was really good, and that included a large fire, so I mean, there's no complaints.
Okay, all right, thank you for that.
And then, also, that due to no open container law, you do have people drinking down there without anybody who's experienced really overseeing anyone or limiting-
We're not promoting it, though. I mean, it's a little different.
No, I'm just, yeah.
We're authorizing the liquor license.
Right.
It's a little bit different, in my view, legally, but thank you.
We're used to that pushback from, we're in alcohol all the time, and we're used to the pushback on it, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I had expressed my views at the last meeting, that I really don't think that a family concert series is the place for beer to be sold. And if we start with one vendor, there'll be others lined up. You know, it's quiet. The people who do bring their own alcohol, to my knowledge, there's never been a problem on the common in all the years. I do know that the PAX, the Recreation, excuse me, Committee approved it. You know, they think it's a good idea. However, in my mind, it's not the venue for it, and I won't be voting for it either. Any other comments?
I'm in support of this. I attended the bonfire, and I think they've had a couple of beers, and I like the idea that it maybe attracts more people to the common. And I, in more, I'm not, you know, I think this is-
I don't think the common's going to turn into spring break. I just think that it's going to be a moderation. It's going to be people enjoying the music, having a beer or two, and that's what it is. And I'm hoping that, you know, if you notice something out of context, that you'll step in and stop it.
And typically, with craft beer, it tends to be a more responsible crowd. You tend to see a lot of the out-of-control things more with alcohol, where we're just just serving beer. I think, you know, it remains in control most of the time. I've done very few events that have ever gotten out of control, and generally, it was outside alcohol brought in was most of the problem.
Okay, Michael, you had your hand up.
I just had a question about the, you mentioned a town modifier. Is that a safe harmless clause or something like that, or? You mentioned your insurance has a town modifier?
We would list the town as additionally insured-
Additional insured.
-on a policy that covers me to serve the public. That's what we do for every beer festival or event we attend. Our insurance, the agent sends us a copy that lists whatever the host venue is as additionally insured, and then that kind of covers us and you guys.
Yeah. So, I'd note that, you know, the PAX and Rec has approved it, and the police chief has signed off on it, so I would be leaning towards giving it the okay with the understanding if something did happen, we do have the right to revoke it at any time.
Yes, sir.
Is somebody willing to make a motion, then?
Oh, wait. Administrator, Mary.
I have a question, if I may. Your insurance, you mentioned you're going to name us additionally insured. Is that on the liquor liability insurance?
I'm not 100% sure.
It needs to be a liquor liability policy naming the town.
Yeah, I do know that for all the, we're doing the market, the town market, and that was okay, and then the bonfire, I think we went through the same process.
Yeah.
All the other events that we attend through the course of the year, whether it be a charity event or a beer festival, it all is the same process, so I would assume that the insurance is correct for what we're doing.
When we get, I'll take a look, and if there's an issue, I'll give you a call.
Absolutely.
Can I just ask a question? Is there a distinction between being on the liability insurance and having just an additional insured?
And I don't know the nature of your, because what you're probably thinking of is general liability policy, but there's a special liquor liability policy for events and for property owners who allow liquor events, so it's all on them if there's a liquor-related incident, because some general liability policies separate those two issues. So, a general liability policy may not cover liquor incidents, whereas a liquor liability policy insures for liquor events.
That would typically be something that I would have to defer to Sean on. He deals with that most of the time, so, yeah.
Mary, just, I know it's probably going to pass. I'm hoping that the motion makes it subject to the type of liability insurance our town administrator is requesting. And the other thing I would request of the board is if we can have an agenda item in the future where we actually come up with a policy, rather than flying by the seat of our pants and granting it to the first person that came, in terms of, you know, what if more than one brewery or establishment comes forward? What would be the maximum amount of permits you would give? What is the selection process in terms of, you know, is it the first one that files with the town? That kind of thing. Do we want to limit how many beers that, from the town's perspective, are given to one person, or do we want to leave it-
That's their job.
...to the discretion of the brewery or the bar? You know, or is that Sturbridge's call, because it's our event? So, I just, I think it's just wise to have a policy rather than, you know-
Events that I've attended in the past where people were going to be having multiple vendors-
Right.
-a lot of times, a charity or a town will actually sell beer tickets, and then, so they're kind of in control of how many beers any one individual would have.
Okay, that's a good suggestion.
I know OSV, when they run their beer fest, they kind of do that. They're in control of the tickets and the sales.
Exactly.
We just serve it, and then, so they can, you would have to go back to somebody from the town who was a responsible individual that would then limit them, or say, "You're only allowed this many tickets," so, I mean, that's-
I think that's reasonable, and I think, I'm not reinventing the wheel, because then we're in control, as opposed to-
Exactly.
You know, I know you're coming in good faith, but you might think three's good for this guy. We might say, "You know what? Two for everybody."
Right.
You know, kind of thing.
Yeah, and from your point, that's, it's allowing the town greater control-
Little control.
...over the service, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the special one-day liquor license for Bay State Brewing on the Town Common for the Thursday night concert series. With the liability, with the insurance liability, thank you. That has been discussed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Three to two? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, now we do have our 635 public hearing. Mike?
The Osterman one was-
It's in your left hand. It's on the back page.
Back page?
Of that one.
That one. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 15th, at 7:00 PM regarding the application of a common victor all-alcohol liquor license filed by Michael-
Oh, wait a minute, sorry. The 635 one is the propane tank.
Oh, I thought that was canceled.
It is.
Well, but it's posted, so we have to-
Oh.
...open it, close it, and then revoke it.
Okay.
I don't know if I've got the legal ad for that here.
Do you have the legal ad?
I don't think it's in here.
We'll take a minute.
We'll, we'll get it.
Oh, wait. Yeah, but it's seven o'clock instead of 6:30.
That was my mistake, too, Mike.
Oh, I didn't know we had, I thought it had been just canceled, the-
But because it's a posted, legally posted-
We have to legally open the meeting and close it.
And close it.
Is this being canceled or canceled entirely?
Yeah, they're going with a different vendor, so, okay. Just to confuse us.
I know.
There we go. Thank you.
Little problem, Andy, it takes a while.
Okay. The Town of Sturbridge Board of Selectmen, in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws 148, Section 13, hereby give notice that a public hearing will be held on July 15th, 2019, at 6:35 PM at the Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass., on the application of Osterman propane for a new license for storage tanks for flammable materials located at 30 River Road, Sturbridge, Mass.
Okay, is there anyone here from Osterman's? I mean, we do have a letter. Are you here? No. Okay. It says, "The purpose of this letter is to revoke the recent application for license to store, which was submitted on June 17th, 2019. It is our understanding that the owner of Pine Lake RV Resort and Cottages, Philip Morrow, at 30 River Road in Sturbridge, has decided to sign on with another propane vendor. Please revoke also any other storage permits actively in place at the same property." Okay, does somebody want to make a motion to revoke the application?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Does this revocation, in addition to this application, revoke any other permits that may exist?
Storage permits, if only in Osterman's name.
Only Osterman.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the motion?
Yeah. Okay. Was there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, is there a motion then to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, it's not seven yet. So, what can we do quickly? We do have department reports, building department, Nelson is unavailable.
Okay.
But if anyone has any questions on his report, you can forward them to Jeff, and he'll get them to Nelson.
Okay.
Okay. Police Department, Chief Ford?
Good evening.
Do the monthly reports for May and June. Another business-as-usual type of month for us. You can see the operations and the trainings that were conducted. I believe in your packets also, we started to include the SRO reports in there for some activity from, for the SROs, as was discussed at the previous meeting. I'll be open to any questions or comments on the May report.
Okay, any questions on the May report? The SRO's quite busy.
They do keep, they do keep busy. These logs, what you're getting is what they turn into myself and the lieutenant and their sergeant, and the sergeants regularly. We just started to include that with a few redactions of any names if that comes up, et cetera, just for the purposes of this report. So, June, again, on the start of the summer, you can see that we're starting to increase the boat patrols. Though we're at the end of the fiscal year, we're running a little short on the overtime monies. We're trying to do as much as we can with what we had available to us. You'll see that they'll start to increase, and the hours will continue to fluctuate and vary. We're doing evening patrols, day patrols, weekend patrols. With the new, with the new boat, we do have the lighting mechanisms where we can go out in the evenings and also spend plenty of time going to the different bodies of water in town. On the training side, on the June 18th, 19th, the MEMA All-Hazards Conference, I noticed there was an omission there that wasn't included. Our Emergency Management Coordinator, Kevin Filczek, was with us at that training as So, I'd be open to any questions or comments regarding June.
Any questions from the board? Board comments?
I missed May.
Sorry?
I just had a question. At the, in the end of May, you had evacuation drills for both the elementary school and the charter school.
Yes.
And I presume these, these drills go on throughout the year, perhaps when they get back to school in September, October?
We do, we do them in the beginning of the year, and halfway during the year, and then send them away towards the end of the year with one as well.
Okay.
So that they are regularly conducted.
Yeah. You know, they had a couple weeks left to go, and you did the drill, which is good, you know? You never know when something's going to-
And they'll be reinforced, and the skill set, and the skills that they obtain from those drills can be carried over to almost everywhere they go in their lives.
Yeah.
Have there been any violations with any of the boat inspections?
The number, I don't have any violations that I can recall for these two months. I believe that if there were any, they were, they were warnings, but these two months, most of the inspections were fine, without any issues.
That's good. Okay, anything else for us?
Yes. You had asked about the data-
Dispatches.
...for the dispatch.
Yeah, thank you.
Unfortunately, I've been chasing that, and 911, State 911, it has, they've given us numbers, but it's not what we're looking for, and I don't think that, I think, right now, it's going to be too labor-intensive to try to be, to try to capture that data. To understand the complexity of how the system works, I explained that if a car accident came on 131, that everybody that picks up their cell phone and dials 911, the dispatchers on the desk are taking those initial calls, while the other calls may get rolled over or rolled back to us. And those numbers are added and counted, but they don't necessarily qualify as an abandoned call, because the calls were answered, it's just that there were so many coming in. It could show that we had seven abandoned calls for one 911 call, but the call was answered on its initial, the first one that came in. And then it shows seven abandons, because they rolled over, because it was such a volume of calls that were coming in. So, we would literally have to go to every single call, look at the call, find the first call that was taken on 911, determine if it was taken by our dispatchers or not. So, in, with doing that with some 4,000 911 calls, it certainly would take some work to try to get to the bottom of that accurate data.
Okay.
What I can say, as I did say before, we're down to now the entire midnight shift rotation and seven shifts a week that are going with just a single dispatcher. And that is just the regular tour duty time, and it does not include when we're dealing with benefiter or any other types of training times.
Can you just repeat that, Chief?
Seven shifts a week-
Seven shifts.
...that are still single dispatch only.
Okay.
During day and evening, all midnight shifts are single dispatch only.
Single, and I know, and the goal is to have a double dispatch 24 hours a day.
Right, or to, at least Monday through Friday. Again, that is not counting when people take vacation time, and we have budgeted to fill approximately 75% of those vacant shifts during that time, so hopefully, we'll get backfilled in. Also, we do get the grant from State 911, which is approximately $32,000, and now we've just trained this whole cadre of new part-time dispatchers, and I've given them carte blanche to come in and work as second dispatchers on any shifts they want to, that there is only one person on. So, we're going to be backfilling a lot of that, a lot of those vacancies with that grant to hopefully fill those gaps.
That's great. I appreciate the, what you, I can appreciate what you said about the level of difficulty for the ER calls that we're not addressing, so I'm okay with that. But I guess what I also wanted to do was compare what, I guess what I'm after is what kind of impact has it had by hiring an additional dispatcher at a special town meeting? So, what I would still like to know is, before we hire that additional dispatcher in October, how often, or not, were we covered with two dispatchers? In other words, how has it changed? How much more additional coverage have we been able to achieve by hiring one additional dispatcher? So, maybe you could just go back and, or maybe, you probably don't know something like that off the top of your head, but, you know, like, look at the month before. I want to know, like, how much of an impact has it had on providing two dispatchers 24 hours a day? Because I know you said that's what the standard is, that's what, you know, safety's calling for, that's what your goal is, and I just want to know how much better, how much have we improved on reaching that ultimate goal by hiring one additional dispatcher?
I understand.
And that'll help us know, okay, we get another one, how much closer are we?
I understand, I understand what you're looking for, and again, that's going to prove difficult right now, just because life does continue to go with, on at the police station, and there was, in those numbers and in those times, we had one dispatcher that was out on injured leave for an extended period of time, several months. And then, recently, had another dispatcher that was out on extended leave due to an on-the-job injury. And so, therefore, that person, that sixth person that was there for the dispatcher, backfilled those, that vacancy to hold that, that place. So, we were, we've been consistently running with five, like we were before, so it's going to be hard to try to quantify that request until I have enough of a period of normalcy that I can utilize as, as, for the specific data sets.
So, the impact hasn't been that great, because it was basically backfilling somebody that was out.
And then, on top of it, we've been training all those new part-time dispatchers, and so the accuracy of any of that information is going to be flawed or skewed in one way or another, because you've got, every single day, you've got a second part-time dispatcher in there helping out, so I'm not going to get a real snapshot of what it's like with just the full-time people.
At some point, I guess you will, when-
I've got, I've got my eyes on it.
Okay, all right. I just want to know so that next year when we do the budget-
And as soon as I can get some good information, as soon as I can get some information, I absolutely know what you're looking for.
More budget time to see, you know, will I advocate for another one?
Absolutely know what you're looking for, and I'll work on trying to get a good data set for you of that information.
Beautiful.
Okay, anything else from the board? Anything else, Chief?
No, just great weather out there.
Oh, I know, enjoy it.
Hope everybody continues to enjoy the sunshine and the long days.
Yeah, they're getting shorter, though.
Oh, shit.
Yeah.
Yeah, but just, still, still, don't even hope for that.
It'll be Christmas shopping before you know it.
They do, the minute I know after Solstice, we know.
I only like, I only like to count that minute on the other side of winter.
Yes, yes.
When the spring comes around, it's an extra minute a day.
We don't really feel it, Mary, till like October.
Yes, I know.
Oh, you'll feel it in August.
No.
Oh, yeah.
End of August.
7:30, oh, yeah.
Yeah, the mosquitoes are out.
So, on a happy thought.
Happy thought, enjoy.
It's still nice out.
It's going to be beautiful all week.
That's right.
It's going to hit high numbers in terms of 80s, right?
Yeah.
Behind us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, we have like a half, well, actually, we have a half-minute before 7:00.
Accept the resignation.
Yeah, we can do Action Item Six, the accept resignation from John McGuire from the Police Department. Somebody want to make a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Michael?
The one I was reading?
Yes.
Accidentally. Okay. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 15th, 2000, oh, July 15th, at 7:00 PM regarding the application of common victor all-alcohol liquor license filed by Michael Johnson of Stonewall Grill at 538 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass. This hearing will be held at the Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass.
Okay, could you please come down?
How are you guys?
Good.
Good.
The microphones are for the TV audience, because we can hear fine. Sometimes.
Most of the time.
Yeah. Okay, would you please explain to the people at home what it is you're doing?
I'm reopening up the old Copper Stallion, now called the Stonewall Grill, and finding for a full liquor license for my employees, for my customers and that, so waiting to get this through, and we're in the process of doing some more work in the building, and we should be open, hopefully, in three weeks. So, I'm trying for, anyway, yeah, so.
There's always something.
Yes, but, you know, it's got to get it done, yeah, so.
I know. And it's not always the town, contrary to-
Exactly, yeah.
...word of mouth. Okay, does the board have any questions?
Has the police chief reviewed this, this application? Because usually, we get, get a-
Well, no.
Well, no, I think I went through this before.
Yeah?
We don't usually get, not for, not for a license.
Not for a liquor license?
No.
One day, the one-day ones.
The one-day ones sometimes.
But this goes through A, B, C.
A, B, C, C.
But.
No, we've never.
We've never had an application form?
Nope. But we have, you know, one-day liquor license with parking and different things. We've never really had the police.
Nope.
I did have a question though, on page two of the application.
Yeah.
Where it says criminal history, it says, has any individual listed in question six?
That's what I was getting at.
Oh, and you're the only one listed?
Yes, yes.
Um, and applicable attachments ever been convicted of a state, federal, or military crime? If yes, attach an affidavit providing the details of any and all convictions and you checked yes.
Yes.
But there's no affidavit.
Um, well, I had my lawyer write that up, I thought he did it all right. I had Tom Marino did all that, I thought he.
No, I didn't see any, didn't.
I didn't either.
Okay.
Yeah, we would need to see that.
Okay, all right.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Is the manager here or?
Right there.
Scotty, yeah.
Yeah. Now, is he tip certified, I assume?
Yeah, we all are, yes.
That's what I, looking at your work history.
We're all tip certified. We've got all the certification for everything, yes.
Yeah. It looks like they, their resumes, they've worked in the business for a few years.
Yeah, many years, yes.
Yeah, without that affidavit, if this goes into the state without it, the state's going to bounce it.
Okay.
Right back to us.
Oh, okay.
Did you already do it? Did you already write your affidavit? It's unfortunate that you can't, you know, call your attorney and get it to us.
I don't know if you did it, I thought, I thought everything was done, that's why I had it all done like that.
Well. Yeah, I mean, we could certainly approve it contingent upon getting there.
Okay, I can get ahold of Tom tomorrow then, sure?
Yeah, you know, I mean, if the board's amenable to that.
I guess, I don't know.
Well, if we don't get it.
Yeah.
I know, they don't get the license.
Do we put a timeframe on getting it?
What's that, I'm sorry?
We put a timeframe on getting it, like if.
Well, probably by the end of the week.
I was gonna say, if I call him tomorrow, I'm sure he'll draft it up really quick for you.
Yeah. By the end of the week because it still has to be approved by the state.
Yeah, perfect.
So, does somebody want to make a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion that the, the board approve.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, it's a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions or comment? Wow, so many people.
Yeah.
So many people and no comments. What, Mary?
I was just, do we need to know what the affidavits reads or not?
Well, we don't, but state needs.
Yeah, okay.
State.
All right.
I think you'll probably have a state one demand.
Yeah, we could.
State will decide whether or not it's okay.
Yeah. Okay, so does somebody want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion that, that we, that the Board of Selectmen approve the application for a full liquor license at 538 Main Street for the, was it the Stonewall Grill?
Stonewall Grill, yes.
And contingent upon the town receiving a copy of the affidavit indicated under question number six on page two of the application.
You got it? Sounds good.
Second, okay.
Thank you.
Do we usually put the hours, I'm sorry, I just.
Well, last time I was here, when I got the actual business license, you guys had questioned.
We did the hours then, okay.
I said one o'clock and you had questioned it and the only reason I did that was because the prior owner, that's what they had, so I was.
Yeah, a lot of our licenses go to one, but doesn't mean people are open to one.
No, it's gonna be early buyer, sure.
Yeah. Yeah, well, no, I know.
Did we vote?
Better, better to have it now than have to come back and ask for extension of ours.
So we're gonna get stark at four.
Get stark at four.
Yes, okay, any more discussion, all in favor of the motion? Okay, five to nothing.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you. Good luck.
Okay, thank you. I'll get that right over to you guys, I'll drop it off in your office tomorrow, if he does it tomorrow.
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor of closing?
I was gonna ask him what kind of food he's gonna have. All right, I guess we'll.
Guess you'll have to wait for the week.
We'll have to wait to find out.
I'm always open to another opportunity not to cook.
Hey, Mary, learning.
I end up learning from the best to my right.
Yeah, we've got some good restaurants, so.
Yes, okay, next, Kevin, our Economic Development and Tourism Coordinator.
So I have two items that I'd like to just briefly discuss with you. They are the Commonwealth Community Compact and some TIF information. If you have a preference, otherwise I can just start with the compact.
Go which way you want.
All right. So I'm here today to let you know that we were awarded the Commonwealth Community Compact for the development of an economic development self-assessment and the development of an economic development strategy. This is something that we started back in late winter to try to update our master plan, specifically the economic development chapter. And we were denied with one grant and they directed us the compact, so here we are. I will have, Jeff and I will sign the, or Jeff will sign the contract in the next few days and I will begin soliciting quotes for this project. And ideally, we will have someone selected by August and it will be completed by June of next year. And at that point, we will have a full workup of where our town economy is today and how businesses are operating in that, as well as a strategy to move forward. By the end of that report, I will then use that information to create our new chapter in the master plan for economic development. So that's the brief, that's kind of the two-second elevator pitch for that grant.
It's good news.
Yeah, so yeah, I guess it's $24,000, so we'll move forward with that unless there's any questions on it.
Yeah, I, you said that, that you were gonna have, the town administrator was gonna sign?
We, I checked with the Division of Local Services today as to who can sign the contract. I initially had the chair.
Chair, yeah.
And I asked, well, who can sign the contract? And they said, well, it can either be, you know, it can be the town administrator or the chair, so since town administrator and I are probably working on this closely, I figured it would be simpler.
Oh, no, that, that's fine, plus you're here more than me.
So it's really up to the board. I had it initially as the chair, but.
So, yeah, that's, that was a question I had because the, in the form, the paperwork we had, it was the Finance Director that was gonna sign any, all contracts and agreements. On page 12 of.
She signed the castle form, I believe that, I believe it was a castle form, which is, I see what you're saying now that, now that we are saying it out loud.
That's not, it's on page 12 here, it's.
I, I know the form you're speaking about and I did have her sign that because I've had her sign the similar form in pass for other grants, but we can have, we can re-sign that as, as, as the town administrator can sign.
I think the Charter says that the town administrator signs, you know.
Whatever legally is sufficient and whatever the board prefers.
And sometimes we've voted the chairman too.
Sometimes, and sometimes the chair, but in this case, it's gonna be the, so you had a suggested motion in your memo?
I did, again, that was.
We'll change that to, rather than the chair.
Town administrator.
Okay. So, now I gotta find your suggested motion. Yes, I saw it here somewhere. Suggested motion, move to authorize the town administrator to sign the contract for the Commonwealth Community Compact for the economic development self-assessment of Sturbridge.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, we have the TIFs.
Yes, so I believe you have both TIF reports from Arlen Tool and Holiday Inn. You will also, in the next couple of weeks, have the Public House report for fiscal year 19. The reports are fairly self-explanatory, they're fairly brief. I'm really here to answer any questions you might have on them. I will note that the TA and I will be speaking in the next couple of days about TIFs regarding the current TIF policy and making a few updates to bring it up, to add some lessons learned over the past few years to the policy in addition to developing a TIF application. Part of the onus of that is we've been approached by a few different people who have inquired about TIFs, nothing official yet, but with that, we decided it's a good time to revisit those policies and just make sure they're, they're up to par. But again, if you have any questions on Arlen Tool or Holiday Inn, I'm more than happy to answer those questions and Public House, I will send to you once it's received in the same format.
Okay, any questions? TIFs, comments?
I saw the report, the annual report from, from Arlen Tool. Did we get one from Holiday yet, or?
Yes, I just in your package. And passed it out tonight.
Oh, okay.
It was received this, I got it over the weekend, so that's why it wasn't in your initial packet.
Okay. That was my question, that's it.
Anything else from the board? Anything else, Kevin?
Now, unless the board has any questions for me about any other subjects.
No.
I have a question. The Country Curtains building is a, is a nice location and a nice building. Has, have any businesses been contacted to maybe try to bring them in or something to fill it?
OSV is, which owns the building, has, has listed it for the past year now and they've, they've looked at different, I know there's been a couple of different people who've talked about a number of the different OSV buildings in that kind of area because you have the old visitor center, you have the Country Curtains.
Right.
So there's, there's different interests, nothing that I've heard has, you know, is, nothing definitive for that, for that building, no.
Now, when you said they've listed it for lease, right, not are for sale?
Correct.
For lease.
For lease, yes, yes. I, you, you know, you can see it, you can see the property for lease either on our website, we link to it, or you can go to, I use LoopNet as kind of my go-to for commercial and industrial properties in town.
What did you call it, Kevin? Excuse me?
LoopNet, it's a.
LoopNet?
L-O-O-P net.
Net, okay.
Yep, it's a national search firm.
Thank you.
Of course. I think it's about 19 properties up for sale or lease right now on LoopNet.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Enjoy the brightness.
For a little while longer, yes. Class.
Okay, next, town administrator's update.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair, just a few things this evening. I received a notice from KP Law that their rates will be going up effective August 1st from $170 an hour to $180 an hour. I don't know when the last time they changed their rates, but it still seems reasonable for municipal attorney work. So that's August 1st. On the diocese this evening was a packet of information including some host community marijuana agreements and a draft policy. Town Planner Gene Buban and I will be reviewing that policy and making a recommendation to you on the, at the August 5th meeting. Then hopefully, if adopted, we can bring back to you sometime in September, some proposed agreements for you to act on. We're still reviewing with the town council, the issue of executive session and negotiations with the retailers. We haven't heard a definitive answer back yet.
Good thing, so it's not an open and shut thing, like.
I'm still waiting for a response from the attorney.
Oh, we're still waiting for a response, I thought they were researching it, okay.
Um, no, just waiting for them to acknowledge the question.
They're waiting till after August 1st.
Probably. And then you received a memorandum from me on 225 Podunk Road about a, they want to take it out of protection, so there's a process we follow, a town policy, so we have 120 days to either buy the property at the agreed-to price or just refuse it and then move on. So there's a process for that to be reviewed and that is underway.
Has, has gone to any other committees?
All, it's gone to planning, recreation, conservation, open space, and the assessors. So they're reviewing it as well.
Okay.
Also the state DCR?
I'm sure it did. Focused on the towns' process at this point.
Does it go to the CP, C2?
No, our policy just says the open space committee, planning commission, conservation, and assessors.
Okay, any questions for the town administrator on that? Okay, and we've done the resignation. Okay, old business, Priscilla?
No.
Chase?
Yeah, I just was wondering if we could send a letter of thank you to that church that picked all the trash up off Route 15? They did an unbelievable job and they were really working hard out there.
A lot of eggs there.
There was a lot.
Yes, yeah.
Be great.
I just am amazed though, the people that just throw stuff out. Hate to see what their house looks like. Okay, any other old?
No.
Mike?
No.
Mary?
I had one and I, oh yeah, are we still going to get together with Jeff to look at the triangles in terms of landscaping for next year? You know, we're 131 and 20, so.
We want to do it on Thursday.
Defer to you, well, you're, whenever you, just, I just wanted to prompt here.
Yeah.
Jogging memory.
Jogging, yeah. I had to jog my own memory, but every time I ride by it and I ride by other towns who have done like so much more with small amounts of space and we have those three beautiful grass areas that we could be improving upon.
State has those three beauties.
Yeah.
Well, serious, which is.
You have to know because two businesses adopted.
Oh, they did, but that was through the.
So maybe, right.
I mean, because I know at one time, there were suggestions for some type of trees there and the state said, no, it's gonna block the visibility and.
Well, maybe we can adopt the rest of it.
Maybe they can do something.
Because.
Oh, no, I mean, there's no.
Pottery.
There's no doubt it could be spiffed up.
Do you want to set a time up right now because it?
We can after, if we want, I mean.
Yeah, we can talk after.
Okay.
We'll talk after, yeah. I don't have any other old business.
Okay, old business, school committee, have we heard anything from them about when they can meet in August for?
Either one of the August dates.
Okay, have we many applications other than the one?
Just one.
Yeah, but we still have.
We haven't informed we have any others, so.
Yeah, we still have to go through the process, so, well, look at the agendas and, you know, probably the last one in August. Sounds good. Okay, that's all I had for old. New, Priscilla?
No.
Chase?
No.
Mike?
No.
Mary?
No.
And I don't have any. We have the tennis court issue.
Yes, I don't know if you got color pictures in your packet or online, but this is an example of the spot.
Yep.
Yes.
And there's numerous ones. We are coming to find out that this is not an uncommon situation with tennis courts in New England. Somehow the aggregate has iron in it that reacts with the coating and it creates these rust spots. So as you saw from Lynch, they're offering to cover 50%. We've sent this to town council for review and whether or not, even though there wasn't a formal warranty, was there an implied warranty and how does this all work out? And, you know, we're gonna pay another $13,000 or $14,000 and there's no guarantee this, this material won't surface again. So, we're trying to do some more homework on this before we bring back a recommendation.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions, Priscilla?
No.
Is that what's your phone?
Oh, I thought I heard your voice.
No, no, I didn't say anything. She might have.
I have a question.
Mike?
When the job was bid, was it, did they specify a type of bituminous...
No.
... material? There's, it didn't specify type I?
Not that I'm aware of.
Mass DOT?
Not that I'm aware of. Original, the original bid was concrete and they, they did a change order to go to asphalt.
Contractor...
The town moved it to asphalt.
Oh, the town requested a change order?
Well, we, we bid it as concrete or...
Yeah.
And then we switched it to asphalt. I don't know the nature of that change.
Yeah, 'cause, you know, there is a type of, of asphalt mix that allows some iron in it. And for example, mass DOT ST mix, surface treatment mix would allow iron in it. If it was type I, the aggregate has to be tested, so there's no, no iron in the aggregate.
Okay.
So, it depends what type of mix might have been specified and...
I don't think there was a specification on the mix.
And it, it wasn't done in accordance with our town annual bid or anything like that?
No, this was a separate contract.
Separate contract?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anything else on that? Let's take on, yes. Okay, and then this B came up the last minute because man was, lost track of time. It's a request for one day liquor license for Hamilton Run Gun Club for an outdoor event, August 2nd and 3rd. Second, yeah. And we don't meet again until the 5th.
Shoots from there.
Oh, okay, would you please come up to the mic?
Lori Jesky, representing the Hamilton Run and Gun Club on behalf of our bar manager, John Riddick.
Okay, I know this has come before us...
I've been here before.
Many times, but for the people at home, could you please explain?
Um, it is a two-day hot rod show, 65 and over, sixty cars, 65 and older.
Older.
People.
No.
Cars, cars.
Let's not go there.
Cars, 65 and over. And it starts at 3:00 on Friday afternoon and runs all day Saturday. They have bands playing throughout the entire event.
Okay, any questions from the board? Priscilla?
Yeah, the application we have in our hand that was put in a thing says July 14, 2018.
Oh, that was probably, I typed the date wrong.
Okay, there's no signature of the police chief either.
Right, we're gonna have to...
Run it by you at the plaque.
'Cause they kinda got this in quick, so it'll have to be contingent upon the police chief.
And the date change?
Yeah.
Yeah, town administrator, date change, all that has to change.
The applicant was advised that there's a newer application online.
Okay.
They're probably used in...
Or I have it, he can get it from me.
Okay.
Yeah, we, I helped John fill this out. He's taken over as bar manager, I had been previously and just was not aware that there was a new application, so I apologize for that.
We've never had a problem, you know, for as long as I've been sitting here, we've never had a problem with the event, I think, so.
No, no.
Well, I'm just raising the point of the police chief's signature, 'cause that came up before, so, just raising that.
Yeah, we run it by on packing and traffic there. Okay, so, it's Saturday and Sunday?
Friday, Saturday. Friday and Saturday, August 2nd and 3rd.
Ready, August 2nd and, yeah. That does say that on the application.
Yeah, but it's got the wrong year.
Uh, the signature is the wrong year.
Yeah, still the wrong year.
Right there.
Oh, okay.
And Leon Goleman instead of Jeff Branson.
Okay.
Somebody wanna make a motion contingent upon the...
I'll make a motion that we approve this contingent upon the signature of the police chief. And, yeah, and updating the, the date and the town administrator.
Apologize, I didn't realize.
Oh, that's okay.
Change in the administrator, I should've checked when I was...
Hopefully, it won't happen for quite a while.
Been here to tell you.
Been flipping. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, good luck, thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Correspondence.
Your honor.
Okay, let me find it.
It's a tough job, see?
Yeah, this is, uh...
Ready.
Oh, God. I'm sorry. It's gotta be here soon. Where is the correspondence? I got the minutes. Okay, it's gotta be here.
Do we know what page it's on?
It's...
There we go.
Okay, I've got it. Yes. July 8th, 2019, KP Law, Town Council reappointment. And July 10th, 2019, there was an update from Charter Communications on upcoming changes. What are the nature of the changes? It's just some channel changes, channel 166 and 853. Hillsong Channel and Uplift Channel.
Okay, just a point and note, Andrea, on Town Council, that's SEL, not CIL.
Okay.
Southbridge has a Town Council, CIL, but the lawyer is SEL.
SEL.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
Just a fine point. Okay, approval of minutes, July 1st, 2019. Andrea, I just had one minor correction. Under public service announcements, where I had said Mr. Bonifay served, it sounds a little disjointed. It should just say Mr. Bonifay served many years as an assessor and a finance committee Is there a motion then to approve this amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
I just have one more question.
Oops.
Sorry. Nope, no, okay, that's fine.
Almost too late.
At the last meeting, we lost power to that room. Everything was on one circuit, so in the last week, we had an electrician in and he added some circuits to that room and we're gonna work on keeping it cooler than it is now, so that should not happen again because of that singular issue. So, it's been resolved.
That's good to know. Okay, Priscilla?
Motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, one hour.
This is very good. Is this the record?
While it's still daylight.
I know.